The time has, the time has come for the Monday, November 4th, 2019, regular city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mozzio. Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager. Mayor Cunningham.
Present. To lead us in invocation will be led by Pastor Lorenzo Carrera. And immediately following that, to lead us in the pledge will be Dr. Shippel. All rise, please.
Dios bendiga a todos los que están en este lugar.
God bless everyone tonight in this city hall meeting.
Vamos a dar inicio a una oración.
We'll be praying tonight.
Le voy a pedir que por favor inclinemos nuestro rostro dándole gracias a Dios por todo lo que él ha hecho con nosotros.
We ask that you bow your heads tonight in reverence to God and that we continue this prayer to continue this meeting.
Dios y padre de nuestro señor Jesucristo.
God, our Father, Jesus Christ.
Venimos delante de tu presencia.
You come in your presence.
Sabiendo que tú eres todopoderoso y tienes toda autoridad, señor, como las autoridades que están aquí presentes.
We know that you're all-powerful, Lord, that you will lead this country, Lord, to great and marvelous things, Lord, and we know that we put our trust and faith in you.
En esta hora, Dios mío.
In this time, I, God.
Te pido, señor, que cada cosa que esa reunión tenga como plan, señor, tú lo puedas bendecir y puedas dar sabiduría a cada persona.
Lord, we pray that your will be done tonight and that you give wisdom to those in authority, my God, that you put in this council, my God, and that you continue to shine your glory in this city, my God.
Que todo lo que ellos hayan planeado pueda hacerse, señor, del mejor acuerdo y que cada uno, señor, tenga el conocimiento de que las cosas van a prosperar para bien.
Lord, we pray that the plans of this city flourish, my God, that you continue to give these people the wisdom or the knowledge necessary, Lord, that, Lord, that your work will continue, my God, in the city, and we pray that everything comes out for your good.
Te pido, Dios mío, que todo lo que ellos hayan planeado para esta ciudad, señor, pueda prosperar y que todas las cosas, señor, que tienen, señor, como proyectos, Dios mío, puedan resultar, señor, en beneficio para todos, señor, y puedan ellos ver una gran victoria, señor, en todo lo que ellos propongan.
Lord, we pray that this city continue to prosper, that people continue to flourish, my God, that they continue to grow, my God, that we continue to put our trust in you, just like the forefathers put that match, my God, and, God, we trust and we continue, Lord, just to continue to put our faith in our hearts in you, my God.
Que la paz de Dios corra por esta ciudad, señor, y que todo lo que, que haya, señor, que no trae bendición, Dios mío, tenga que salir de esta ciudad. Queremos que Wakigan, señor, sea una ciudad próspera, una ciudad de paz, una ciudad que sabe recibir a los que vienen a visitar y que puedan sentirse cómodos cada vez que vienen, sabiendo, señor, que tú has puesto, señor, autoridades sabias con conocimiento de todas las necesidades que hay aquí.
Lord, we pray that you continue, Lord, to give us peace, my God, in this city, my God, that we continue to grow, my God, that this city, Lord, continue to be just a place of your presence, my God, that this city continue to flourish, that your plans won't always be recognized, my God, and that whatever plans are in the people's hearts, my God, continue to grow, this city, my God, that this, we put the city walking in in the map, my God, and it's all because of you, Lord, and we pray all this in your marvelous thing.
Señor Jesús, te pido en esta hora, que bendiga, señor, que siendo tu mano de poder sobre cada uno de ellos, señor, que la mente de ellos, señor, ahora mismo, señor, sea llena, señor, de sabiduría, de entendimiento, y que todo, señor, lo que se vaya a resolver quede resuelto, señor, y que todo aquello que se vaya a proponer, que sean propuestas, señor, que son para el bienestar y el servicio de esta ciudad.
Lord, we pray that you continue to extend your arm towards us, my God, that you continue, Lord, to let us grow, Lord, that, Lord, you just continue, Lord, to do your will, my God, in this city, Lord, that you continue, Lord, just to give the wisdom, Lord, to the people and authority, my God, you continue to give them the knowledge, Lord, the strength to continue to do this day in and day out, Lord, we pray all this, Lord. Thank you, Lord Jesus.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, no, that's one of those wifi booster things. Because everyone was having so much problems.
Next item on the agenda is Mayor's comments. First of all, we want to send a hearty get well to Alderman Seager. Alderman Seager slipped on some ice and is currently recovering after knee surgery. Please keep him and his family, him in your thoughts and prayers. Upcoming events, Waukegan Park District's annual Turkey Trot is this Saturday, the ninth at Bevia Park. The registration fee is two cans of non-perishable foods. Also, on Saturday, a lot's dance presents a work of dance at Sign of the Dove, 424 10th Street. Tickets are available online or at the door. Two musical performances will be on Sunday, the 10th of November. Waukegan Concert Chorus will present Mark Hayes and Holidays. At 4:00 PM at First Presbyterian Church at 4:00 PM, and Jazz Wave will be at Three Brothers Theater, Stage 115, at 6:00 PM. Waukegan Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony will be Monday, November 11th, stepping off at 10:45 at Water in Genesee and ending at Veterans Memorial Plaza on West and Washington. Three Brothers Theaters, Afghanistan, Wisconsin, opens on Friday, September 15th. The performance is a collection of stories directly from service, directly from service people and their families. Performances are Friday and Saturday through December 7th. November Art Walk is Saturday, November 16th, in downtown Waukegan's Art and Entertainment District. This month's theme is grateful. Don't forget, we will be seeing everyone tomorrow at the Sold Out Wake Up at Waukegan with Waukegan Chamber. And last but not least, Susana Figueroa, please come up and give us a brief description of all of the items you see throughout downstairs and upstairs by the council chamber.
Evening. For many of you, you may wondering what is, what are all those art crafts and figurines, weird figurines? Well, that's part of the Mexican culture, and we're celebrating, that's due to the celebration of Day of the Death. This weekend, we were celebrating Day of the Death, and in Wakigan, we had many, many celebrations due to that day, and that's the reason we have this beautiful display, which is being coordinated and sponsored by Club Apaseo. Club Apaseo is a social club located here in Wakigan. Dia de los Muertos is not a Halloween for Mexicans or for Latinos. Dia de los Muertos is a celebration of life. Dia de los Muertos celebrates lives of our departed loved ones and the new life that comes from death. It helps Mexican and other Latin American families to recognize that that is just the next step to life's journey, and that no one really dies as long as they live in the memories of their families. When Catholic Spanish conquered the Aztecs, they combined indigenous spiritual beliefs with Catholic observance. So instead of a one-month festival in August, we now celebrate on November 1st and 2nd. And it continues to celebrate, to celebrate Day of the, it's a celebration of life, I'm sorry. As a tradition, Mexican and Central American families place pictures of their loved ones and their favorite, with their favorite things in the altar, honoring them, celebrating the lives they led, and calling them back to them. The ofrendas, meaning the offerings, traditionally include each of the four elements, which is water, wind, earth, and fire. Dia de los Muertos helps Latin American families to recognize that as long as they keep their loved ones alive in their memories, their loved ones will never truly die. May generations ahead continue to celebrate this beautiful tradition. And I just wanted to say that here in Wakigan, we have a lot of culture by many, many communities, and this is just the perfect example of what, you know, the culture we have. These ornaments and crafts were being made by the, by community members. There was a Mexican artisan being sent by the Mexican government to help this community here in Wakigan, to teach the children the traditions of Day of the Death, the culture and the art that we have. And not only the children made those ornaments, those crafts, but also the parents. So it's a beautiful tradition, and what better way to introduce it to our Wakigan community and our Land County area? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Susana. I wouldn't say it's an introduction. I think I would say it's just a continuation of the different cultures that we have in our community. So thank you very much for explaining. I bet everybody was like, what is going on in City Hall? All right. Next, we're going to go a little bit out of order. Motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Turner to move item 6A up before 3. Are there any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just passing Kerry. Motion on the floor, again, by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Turner, to approve zoning calendar 2594 text amendment to the City of Waukegan zoning ordinance authorizing and regulating the legal market of adult-use recreational cannabis by amending Articles 8, 9, 10, 12, and 13. Are there any other questions to the motion?
Yeah, I'd just like to raise a point, a question, comment, in that this ordinance is a zoning ordinance in that to set the parameters and delineate where recreational marijuana can be sold or distributed, infused, that's put into edible goods and such and so forth. And also stipulates that there be no on-site consumption of cannabis. And I kind of, I question that, in that, you know, you can go buy this legal product, but you can't sit down and smoke it inside, you have to take it away. And my concern is that, you know, I understand the arguments or the explanations that were made for that, that people might, might become under the influence, but there is no statutory measurement for under the influence, and that's why it's legal. It's legal to smoke it if you're an adult. There's no measurement that they can say, well, you smoked X amount or you have X amount in your system, there's no way to detect that, and therefore, there is no state statute that says you're under the influence. So I don't see where it is pertinent to not allow on-site consumption. As an example, we have a cigar lounge downtown Waukegan. You go in there, you buy a cigar, you sit down, you're smoking. You have numerous bars and restaurants, you go in, you buy a drink, you sit down and drink it. And there are statutes that stipulate how much is too much with alcohol. There's no such statute stipulation for marijuana. So I think we ought to reconsider in allowing marijuana on-site consumption. If someone goes to buy marijuana, they want to smoke it, they're going to go out in their car and do it. They may drive off and load their pipe or twist the joint up while they're driving, that's distracted driving, puts everyone in danger. And I just don't see the importance of not allowing someone to smoke marijuana where they can legally buy it. And it's a legal thing for them to smoke, and there's no way it can be charged with a DUI or anything like that. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are we voting on this before audience time, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. We're voting now. Any other questions?
I have one.
I'm sorry, Alderman, Alderman Florian.
Regarding what Alderman Turner just said, doesn't the state statute preclude that from happening? Isn't that what we were explained, that?
I mean, I think what Alderman, what Alderman Turner, and I'm going to make sure I say this correctly, is that he's saying that we, it should not be somewhat illegal.
What I'm saying is that if you can buy it, it's legal to buy it.
Should be able to smoke it.
You should be able to smoke it.
Where you buy it.
Where you buy it. If somebody wants to open a marijuana distribution site and lounge, and smoking lounge, they should be able to do that. That's my point.
All right. And I do, before, did you have a question pertaining to that, ma'am?
Yeah. I'm saying, doesn't the state statute not allow that? Like, it's not up to us to decide that. The state decided that.
No, no. We can, we have the power to limit and through the zoning power whether or not to allow smoking lounges.
And that's what we're doing.
That's a separate power.
Okay. I misunderstood.
Yeah. But Noel is going to come up and kind of go over it again.
Yeah. Let me see if I can try to address these things. There is an intoxication threshold in the state law. What there isn't is a real accurate test for it now. Like, for alcohol, we have a breathalyzer. They're still working on developing that level of quality of testing, because the measurement is in micrograms, so it's a really small measurement. Very difficult for tests to accurately measure at this point. So right now, what it requires is police officers who are trained in field sobriety testing for drugs other than alcohol. That's an expensive process, and we hope to do that, hopefully using some of the proceeds from the tax that you've already approved, if this gets approved, to pay for some of that, and hopefully we'll be eligible for some of the state grants for that kind of training for our police officers. But again, it's not that there isn't an intoxication threshold, it's just that there's not real good quality.
Just that you can't detect it.
Yeah. It's hard to test for it. So a Waukegan resident purchasing at a Waukegan dispensary would be able to take the product to their home and use it at home perfectly legally.
How does that keep them from becoming intoxicated?
Well, it keeps them from getting intoxicated where they're purchasing it and then driving home. So they could drive home and then use it at home where they're safely at home.
And drive back over there and buy some more.
Well, there, there are, there are purchase limitations, both for state residents and for non-residents. The non-resident limitation is about half of the resident limitation, but there are thresholds for that as well.
Thank you very much.
And I'm sorry, Alderman Florian, I missed part of your question as I was getting up.
Does the state already restrict that?
Oh, for use? So you can have a consumption location. We didn't write it into our ordinance because there are, there are a number of reasons, but one of the primary ones for us is that we're concerned that there is no comparable product to dram shop insurance that a bar would have, that an alcohol establishment would have. There isn't such an insurance product yet for a consumption location. Personally, I'm unclear on how a consumption location, as a standalone business, would make money, because under the state statute, they're not allowed to sell food. So then, if you're just a place that people come and use, then how are you making money? And I'm unclear on that.
Charge them an entry fee.
Before we go, before we move on, folks. Motion by, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Kirkwood to seat Alderman Mozzio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just passing Kerry. Thank you, Alderman Mozzio. Did you want to finish up that thought?
Yes. So what we've proposed in our ordinance is to allow dispensaries in the B4 and B5 downtown retail districts, as well as the Fountain Square retail district, the Fountain Square overlay, so that would just be the shopping area, and then to allow the other uses, the growers, larger scale and the smaller scale craft growers, as well as the infusion locations, which is where they put THC into other products, baked goods or whatever, and transporters to locate in the I-1 and I-2 industrial districts. And then a dispensary could co-locate with one of the other businesses only in the I-2 location, in the I-2 district. Again, these are all under conditional use permits, so it would go to the planning, there would have to be an application process, they would have to be already licensed by the state. It would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review, back to the Community Development Committee of this body for review, and then to the full council for review before one of those businesses could locate.
Alderman Taylor.
Question in this ordinance, so if people voted no to it, does that mean that cannabis wouldn't be allowed in the city then? Or is it just no to the, to the zoning?
So the, the options that we have are to approve zoning regulations, which is what our ordinance proposes, or we as staff and I believe our Corporation Council's office would recommend banning it, banning the sales, banning cannabis businesses. The alternative, if we do neither of those things, is that our zoning ordinance does have a couple of categories where somebody might argue that they were a fit for that category, like a tobacco shop, and it would be hard for us to defend that they weren't if we didn't have an ordinance. And that would be a permitted use in certain districts, a variety of districts, so it wouldn't come back to you for review. It gives you much less control over who's opening those kinds of businesses in this community. So we would recommend strongly that you either approve this or some other version of regulations governing the allowance of it, or that you ban it and that you do one of those things before January. It, it wouldn't prevent anybody from using in their home in the community. Somebody who's a Waukegan resident could go to another community that allows sales and purchase the product, bring it back to Waukegan and use it. People can drive through Waukegan, going to and from other businesses, and they can have it in their possession as long as they're within those legal limitations. So it doesn't prevent it from being here, it just would stop the sales or the opportunity for those businesses to locate here.
Question. So on the agenda, we're just voting on setting limits, is that what I'm understanding? And zoning into one area, is that what this is?
Allowing the different uses in the different areas that are described.
Just for zone.
In this zoning. It's zoning only, yes. The state law governs most other things. We have very limited capacity to regulate anything other than the zoning aspect of it, and the taxation, which you approved at the last council meeting.
Alderman Newsom.
But in this ordinance, does it, doesn't it allow for cannabis to be in the city of Waukegan as a, as a recreation distributor or whatever? That's part of this ordinance?
This ordinance would allow a dispensary to locate in the B4, B5, or Fountain Square retail district. To sell cannabis in Waukegan as a conditional use, going through that process.
So all that is in this ordinance?
In this ordinance, right. Or to allow the two different kinds of growers, or the infuser, or the transporter in the I-2 or I-1 industrial districts. That's what this ordinance governs.
Mayor, one last question.
Alderman Bolton.
Could you explain for our audience, what is B4 and B5?
The B4 district and the B5 district are the downtown retail districts, east of County Street, between County and Sheridan. Basically, Grand to Belvidere, though they extend a little bit beyond that on both sides.
One, one more question.
The state statutes also still apply in terms of distance from a variety of other uses for the advertising and signage, so it prohibits you from being within, I want to look at my notes and make sure I say which one properly is 1,000 feet and which one's 1,500. It's 1,500 feet between dispensaries, so they can't be closer than 1,500 feet one from another, and 1,000-foot buffers on signs and advertising from schools, daycares, parks, libraries, other recreational facilities. So we feel that that would limit downtown locations to possibly one, if that would, if we can even find a location, and then the, the agency would have to have, or the entity would have to have their state license, they would have to have site control, they would have to go through the conditional use permit. There would be at least one location, and depending on where one located, possibly two locations at Fountain Square. So we believe that those buffers would create a cap of three at the very most dispensaries in our community.
One last question, Mayor. The, I understand the change also included 1,000 feet from childcare facilities and churches.
So that, the childcare facility is in the state law. Our ordinance includes no buffers, and we were responsive, and at the public meeting last week, we talked about the request of the Planning and Zoning Commission to include a buffer from churches. We feel that already exists in our conditional use permit process, because property owners within 250 feet of any location that applies for a conditional use permit are notified by certified mail that there's a request for whatever it is for the conditional use permit. So they're, they have an immediate notification directly to their property that there's a public hearing on this, they're given a form where they can support or object it, they are notified when the public hearing is at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and in addition, the proximity to other kinds of uses is something that the city council can consider at the committee level and at the council level. One of the reasons we're reluctant to place a strict buffer on churches is that the city doesn't currently have an accurate registry of churches, so we could miss somebody. So we feel that you have a better idea of what churches are in your wards, and you can review that as a, as part of the conditional use process and raise it at that time.
And we're going to have two questions, one by Alderman Taylor, and second by Alderman Kirkwood, and then Alderman Mozzio, in that order.
So in the ninth ward, you could have one, say, at Fountain Square, and then one in the industrial park, and then another dispensary, because you'd have a grower and a dispensary that could be together, correct?
The industrial area off of Waukegan Road there in the ninth ward is the RLI, Research Light Industrial District. We did not include that district in this. So we only included the I-1 and I-2 in this ordinance, because those are the more manufacturing-oriented districts.
So how about Magaw Park?
Magaw Park is also Research Light Industrial, it would not be included. So none of those uses could locate in Magaw Park, Amherst, North Point, Norman Woods.
Okay. And before we go to those, we had long discussions about that as well, and we thought, we felt this was probably the best process, so the, the, what we put in the, the planning and zoning, in the zoning ordinance would exclude those for specific reasons, and we can talk offline for though, but we really had some long.
We did. We talked about the intensity of those operations and that those are really more manufacturing-oriented operations, like the I-1 and I-2 districts, and the Research Light Industrial District is a little bit more corporate office warehouse oriented and less on the manufacturing side, so we just felt it was a good split.
Alderman Kirkwood and Alderman Mozzio.
In terms of the cultivating centers, you know, within the zoning, where are those would be possibly located?
Both the larger cultivation centers and the craft growers would be in the I-1 or I-2 district. My personal sentiment is that it's unlikely we would get the larger craft grower here, those are more in the rural areas of the state, and they tend to be a larger footprint operation, larger acreage. A craft grower, like a craft brewer, is a smaller operation. I think that would be more likely if we were to get a growing operation, and that would be in the I-1 or I-2 district. But either one of those would be I-1 or I-2 eligible as a conditional use.
Thank you.
Alderman Mozzio.
Yeah. I think prohibition taught us one thing, when you don't have it legal, you drive it undergrounders, and if we don't allow this, the guy next door will just keep selling it. He'll just keep selling it, because people just say, hey, I got my dealer down the street, Waukegan didn't want to regulate it, so I'll just go to the guy down the street and buy it, and we'll get no tax revenue from it. For Corporation Council, we have to do all the expungements, correct?
That is true.
What's the price tag going to be on that? You got any ideas? Is that, you came?
We ballparked it at a half a million dollars.
Half a million dollars? We have to expunge marijuana convictions?
And that's just for the mailings.
Half a million.
Just for the mailings.
We have, we're responsible for that. So keep denying businesses in the city of Waukegan. Keep doing it.
Keep doing it.
Keep doing it.
Ain't smoke reefer over here.
We have a tax levy on the agenda tonight, people. Keep denying businesses. We ought to just put up a sign, "Waukegan is closed for business."
Closed for business.
Closed.
No.
Unless you want to open up and put a slot. Unless you want to open up and put a slot machine, then we might think about it. But anything else, we don't want ya.
Alright, Alderman, thank you, Alderman Moseo. Alderman Turner.
Hey, I'm just curious, what, what bad thing would happen if one of these facilities, dispensary or infuser or whatever, what would happen if they were located, say, in a strip mall next to a bar or grocery store or something? I'm thinking like over here on Grand, by Lewis Market and down there. Is it, what goes on with these things that we can't allow them anywhere but in an industrial area?
I don't know that there's, well, the growers and infusers are manufacturing operations. So like other manufacturing operations, we want them in a zoning district that is suitable for a manufacturing operation. A dispensing operation is a retail operation, and potentially it could be in another retail district. But we felt that it made sense to start with an ordinance that limits it. We always have the ability to amend the ordinance later and add other zoning districts if we find that they're successful, that they're good corporate citizens, that things work really well. The inquiries that we've had from most of the people who have approached us have been interest in Fountain Square and downtown. We haven't had a whole lot of interest that, now not everybody who has talked to us has identified a location. So let me put that caveat on it. But many of the ones who have, have talked about downtown or Fountain Square. And that was part of the driver for us focusing initially on those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Mayor Cunningham.
Aye.
Thank you.
You know, typically, the mayor does not vote, but I'm explaining my vote. Either we do something, or let it go. And that's just the bottom line. Either you do something, or let it go throughout this city. Those who do not want this in their wards, you almost allowed it to be throughout the whole entire city. And that's just where it's at. You have legislation that came down that we just don't control. And that's just where we're at. And that's gonna be some of the things that's gonna happen, as we as the front, we're on the front line, are gonna have to make the decisions that are mandated by the state of Illinois. It's tough, it's ugly, but it has to be done. And I, with Alderman Moseo, are to find a way to make these kind of decisions, or you're gonna find your way where you're gonna have a problem put on by your police and your fire that you don't want to control. Then you're gonna have to pay for it. And that's just where we're at, folks. So, thank you for your service, and that's on to the next one. So that one's five to four votes, with the mayor casting the vote. Alright? Item three, audience time. Madam Clerk.
First up will be Club Apaseo El Alto from Waukegan, and Margaret Carrasco. Time is three minutes. Pardon me? You're separate.
Put that up here.
You wanna put it, put it right up there, right there, so he can see it. There you go. Alright?
Okay. Club Apaseo El Alto is a vital nonprofit corporation that assists to organize primary through the vehicle of providing individuals and families in need with resources and promote the arts and culture of Mexican traditions in the United States and in Mexico. Supporting the development of traditions and values, Club Apaseo El Alto provides many individuals with a solid foundation for future success. Our mission is to strengthen our local community by providing humanitarian assistance for those in need. The organization was conceived and organized to address our vision to create a sustainable community through the preservation of values, culture, and traditions. Established in 2013, we have strived to improve the quality of life of low-income individuals by providing basic necessities, like including food, clothing, and school supplies. We will also distribute hygiene products, medicine, and wheelchairs to persons in need. Since forming, we have been able to provide resources to over 500 individuals in our community. Club Apaseo also overreaches our goal, is to ensure the members of the community discover the beauty, tradition, and culture of the Mexico and its people. Our center will provide various workshops and activities for youth and their families. Some of the workshops will include Mexican folklorical dance workshops, art and music workshops, Mexican wood carving, ESL classes for adults, home buying workshops, Mexican Day of the Dead, Day of the Child celebration. Club Apaseo is supported by the state of Guanajuato by providing special, professional teachers, by sending them here and teaching our community in the club. Like example, we recently had a teacher of dance, folklorical dance, which made a workshop, which was a success, teaching kids, adults, in our community of our new tradition of dancing. And one of, and they recently sent one of cartonero teacher who help us and teach us how to make those beautiful pieces. As you guys saw outside, they're called alebrijes. And as we, we'll like the state to help us too, to have more funds and help from you guys to keep on helping our communities and our families here in the, in the state.
Margaret Carrasco.
Buenas noches, bienvenidos a todos. Me llamo Margaret Carrasco, y estoy aquí con varios talentosos miembros del Club Apaseo Guanajuato. Mi familia, familia de mi papá, son de Guanajuato. Today, the Mexican community is here to share a little bit of our cultural exhibition of art. As you can see, they were all handmade by residents here in Waukegan. It is known as Day of the Dead, Dia de los Muertos, and it is the biggest celebration in the Mexican culture. The parade is nothing compared to this event in Mexico. And we're here today to present our application that we want to bring it here to Waukegan. It would be the only one. I have pictures that I just distributed, and this is how the people dress up on that day. It's a huge thing at the international level. Millions of people come out over to the state of Guanajuato. The maestro, the key artist and teacher, Mr. Senor Juan Hernandez, just this month, opened six museums in the country of Mexico, okay? And he's coming here to Waukegan. We're bringing him here to conduct cultural art classes for all children, you don't have anyone who's interested, and in the community, and to have it on display. So, let me just give you a little tidbit of how it is in Mexico. As I mentioned, millions of people go. We thought that Genesee Street downtown would be a great location, and what the families do is that, let's say the size of three chairs, the whole street would be divided up, and families would compete, in a sense, trying to get, I mean, it's an honor to have it. You decorate that portion of the street like an altar in memory of your deceased family members, because as Susanna had said, the culture, we believe that deceased persons on that day return, okay? And they're with us. There's special food that's cooked that day, special bread, pan de muertos. It's just a really colorful event, and the thing is that everyone comes dressed up and paints their faces, you probably seen, you know, on the television a little bit of it. But we feel that it's time for this beautiful event to come to Waukegan, and I don't think there's anywhere else in the state or in the Midwest, people would come from all over.
Thank you, Ms. Margaret, thank you. Brother Blanks.
Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. As y'all can recall, I came before you all not too long ago with the family of young Avion Cotton, grandmother and the auntie surrounding his death, and they were requesting, pleading to the city, give them some support in getting closure for their family and reviewing the tapes. So Cunningham said he had a connection with the family. But out of everything that happened as a result, ultimately, this family was told by the city, corporate council, that in order for them, told to the grandmother, that in order for them to view the footage, that that grandmother and that family to get closure, they had to sign an agreement saying that they do not want it open to the public. The family said absolutely not. I mean, to try to coerce a family-agreeing grandmother into signing a document saying that they don't want it released to the public, there's a sensitivity in that. I mean, seriously, you would tell a grandmother that you gotta sign a document saying you don't want it released to the public? The wrong here is not so much on the police officers, as with the process of the city. Something wrong with that. So I filed a FOIA request, as I mentioned before, to the Attorney General's Office on behalf of you, the citizens, to make this public, because these body cameras, you pay for them, you have a right to see what's going on, whether it's right or wrong. And that family came here with respect, they didn't say the police officer was wrong or right, they said they just wanted to see what was on the tape, and they were respectful about it. So I filed a FOIA request, and I'm here to let you all know today, and you should congratulate yourself, because you the public one. And it has been concluded by the Attorney General's Office, on your part, that the city was in direct violation of the FOIA request by not, or keeping you from seeing this tape. And the city now have less than 30 days to turn these, to turn these tapes over to the public for public viewing, or to amend it. You win, yeah, you give yourselves a break. This is a concerted effort on part of the city and the state's attorney's office to keep you from viewing and seeing what you are rightfully and lawfully entitled to. I will be releasing each and every document on my Facebook page, on my Twitter, Brother Blanks, at B-R-O-T-H-A, at Bam4theMind, in our Instagram page. But the bottom line, I'm gonna do everything I can to make these documents public, so you can see who was trying to keep you all-
Thank you, Brother Blanks.
...what you was rightly entitled.
Thank you. Annette Darden.
I'm here today primarily to address you guys up here, City Council. I'm asking, strongly encouraging you all to submit your witness slips for Senate Bill 3888 regarding the legislation for zero emissions of ethylene oxide. And Stop ETO of Lake County would like to see this grassroots effort at the state level, so that our senate knows that we care, and will pass this bill. The best way to do this is through filling out witness slips, calling our senators, and sending them postcards. So again, I'm asking you, at minimum, council members, to submit these witness slips. Stop ETO will have all this information on their Facebook page when the time comes, it'll probably be later this week, when the committee and the House will be allowing the information out, because they will be meeting next week to finalize the bill and vote on it. So we are asking that you, again, minimum, fill out these witness slips, call your senators, and the information will be at StopETO.com. This is just showing that good faith that Waukegan supports it, which I think is very important. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was the tax increase. I'm asking that you vote no on it. I venture to very comfortably say that our, your constituents and your residents would not want to see this come to fruition, so I encourage you to strongly vote no tonight on the tax increase, the property tax increase. Also, as a library board trustee, I encourage you to visit your local library. It's a gem in our community and city, and right now it has introduced Brainfuse.com, which is a really great resource for the community. It helps people find jobs, and it has virtual study groups via different e-resources, like e-meet and e-parachute, Brainwave, which also creates and shares movie-like notes and ideas via study groups. And they have live tutors on there, resume writing, GE testing assistance, and VetNow, which is an amazing resource for military veterans. So I mean, that's just a very small portion of what they do. So I encourage you, again, to visit the library, and otherwise, you can go on the website, WaukeganPL.org for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Diaz.
Thanks for allowing us the time to speak. I'm also here to encourage you to support HB 3888 to phase out ethylene oxide use in residential areas. Our grassroots effort issued a press release today urging our local government, Aldermen, Alderwomen, and Mayor Cunningham to not only sign those witness slips, but to publicly announce your support of that bill to help the residents of Lake County and the rest of the state of Illinois also. We strongly encourage you to do that, and I hope that you will take the time to do that yourselves. But I also threw a few flyers out there today, so if you're sitting near one of these, we have the numbers to all of the senators in the state on the back, as well as some email addresses. If any of you would like to help us, we would greatly appreciate your support. I live very near the Medline facility, and I have a two-year-old granddaughter that I'm desperate to protect from this awful, awful chemical. So I hope that you'll all support us, and StopETO.com, as Annette mentioned, and there's a Facebook group, Stop ETO in Lake County. You can find all the information you need there. Thank you.
Dylan Burden.
Real quick, I just want to announce that the Illinois Singlepayer Coalition is gonna be having a meeting at the Waukegan Public Library, November 12th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM in Classroom A. This is an apolitical, nonpartisan event, it's just informing people of what single payer Medicare would look like in Illinois if it were to come to pass. A lot of people are talking about single payer healthcare, so this is a coalition that is coming to town to kind of tell people about what that would look like here in Illinois. Second thing that I want to talk about is this. This is a report that was put out by the Union of Concerned Scientists, it's called Abandoned Science: Broken Promises. Last week, I took part in a briefing where we talked about this on the Hill in DC at the US House United for Climate and Environmental Justice Task Force. It really stresses the importance of working with officials at the local level, so that, whether that be at the state or the municipal level. This lays out in very scientific detail all the ways in which environmental rollbacks hurt communities like ours the most, poor communities and communities of color. I want to enter this into the record. There's also copies available of it for free online, if anybody would like to take that and read it. It's pretty dense, but it's very, very informative. So thank you very much.
Diana Burden.
I know that there are two messages coming to the city regarding Medline and ethylene oxide. Can I stand- And I stand here to clarify that there is no political gain for me to stand up here and say we need to support HB 3888. To support a ban on ethylene oxide is to support human health and our future and our most fragile. This gas does not only cause cancer. It causes cognitive developmental issues, muscular, skeletal, respiratory. It's not just cancer. And I want to make that clear, that there is nothing personal to gain, nothing political, just human health, and we need to continue pushing forward. We will be going to Springfield and helping push this along. But we do need all of the support we can get. If you have a connection to a senator, Waukegan has a lobbyist. We need all the support we can get because we have large chemical industries fighting against it. And we don't only have ethylene oxide. We have multiple impacts, cumulative impacts here that we have to overcome, social, economic, environmental. It all plays in together. It's not just the toxic air. It's that we have people who live in poverty, is that we have burdens that we have to overcome, social, deep-rooted burdens that we have to overcome. Please, I implore everybody to make that phone call and to push not only our senators, but we still need to push our representatives at a state level. Thank you very much.
Jack Dyne.
There are plenty of issues that we can disagree on regarding the city. But first of all, I think we can all agree on fighting ETO. I'm gonna ask all of you aldermen, do the right thing and support it beyond just testing it. We've done testing. We know it's high. We know that it's a dangerous chemical in the air and affecting our healths. More testing is great to get further stronger evidence, but we need the next step. And I'm asking for all of you guys to be an advocate for that. That's topic number one. Please take that to heart. Number two, we've talked, in the last couple of years, we voted to expand video gaming. We voted to send three casino proposals to Springfield. We just voted on ordinances to regulate marijuana sales in the city. All these are taxable. We just raised water rates last year, I believe it was, with a five-year increase in rates every year. Valuations are going up. I don't know about you guys, but my valuation, my house, has gone up double-digit percentage for the last four years. That's pretty amazing. We've had three deficit budgets in the last three years. Bonds out from millions upon millions of dollars we're spending. We still don't see a lot of economic development efforts. Still, for example, the Sterns Building was torn down. We were promoting, there's a shovel ready, putting, there's rumors we're putting a hotel up there, we're doing this, doing that. It's a vacant lot. The lot behind it spent $200,000 to pave it for eight cars to sit out there every day. We wasted a little bit of money. We spent $52,000 to tear down a house in the First Ward. That made the newspaper. We spent a lot of money. And I understand that our aggregate levy, which was not 5% or higher than the previous year's aggregate levy, so we didn't have to have a truth in taxation hearing held. We're at 4.99%, with a lot of fuzzy math as far as I looked at it with. That's important to me. We can argue about what's going on with casinos. We can argue about marijuana sales, what to do with it. We can argue about where we're spending some dollars. But come on, guys. We all are in Waukegan together. We're all paying some pretty high bills here. Let's not hide things. Let's not move the bar a little bit at the 11th hour. We're all hurting here. I'm gonna ask my aldermen, no tax Turner, I'm gonna ask the rest of you to represent your residents and put them as a priority, their financial well-being a priority. Let's find some ways to make a little bit of cuts, a little bit of sacrifices. We're supposed to get a lot of revenue from a lot of different sources, and we still need to raise more money? We gotta look at ourselves. We gotta look at ourselves and see what we're doing here financially and not just here for a meeting to do a quick vote. I want you guys to do homework. I've asked this of you guys a lot. I'm not expecting you guys to be financial planners. I'm asking you guys to dig into the numbers and see what you guys can do to help out me as a resident, you as a resident, you guys as residents. There's some of you guys I don't agree with politically, and that's okay. We're all residents of Waukegan. We just want the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Luis Diaz.
Hello. I'm pretty sure I'm the only one that's here to oppose HB 388. My reasoning for that is not only Medline employs over 600 employees in Waukegan, we also produce 80% of the sterilization packs that hospitals use across Illinois. So on October 25th, the FDA even stated that banning the ETO for medical devices and sterilization could create a shortage of life-saving surgical kits to treat patients. So contrary on all the things that we've said, the ETO causes cancer on high levels, yes, but the levels we produce, everybody here is currently producing ETO in your bodies. Everybody here produces that. So I'm 22. I've been producing that for 22 years in my own body, each and one single year. Not a single person has pinpointed a person that's gotten cancer or any of these bad things, leukemia, precocious cancer, prostate cancer, and linked it to the ETO that's been released by Medline or Vantage Point. You guys are putting 600 employees out of work, 600 people that will go out of jobs, 600 people that will stop receiving paychecks. They would constantly, they would just have to go look for other jobs while we sort all this out. So I'm here to say we oppose this. Medline has proposed a higher stack, but it was rejected. That higher stack would have filtered out even more ETO, 99.9%. So everywhere them testing, ETOS came up. At highways where there's nowhere a facility near that produces ETO, ETOS popped up. ETOS everywhere. So I'm here to just oppose this, not only for the people, but for the people whose jobs are at risk. And honestly, we haven't found a person that's gotten any of this and linked it to ETO. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Burns.
Hey, Matt.
How you doing?
Tell him he has three minutes.
How you doing? I have something different to talk about. I was told here by the Building Department that there is a ban on rooming houses and boarding houses. Is that correct? Those are ordinance in the city? Because I was told by the Building Department.
We typically do not answer, respond to questions that aren't. If you have a comment, go ahead and make those comments. You can come and see us, either the Building Department, myself, or talk to corporate council. But go ahead and make your statement. Thank you, sir.
Well, see, I have a problem with my landlord, Mark Bellhoff. And when I first moved into place, the place was originally a rooming house, but there was a lot of bad people there, and the house had a reputation of police coming over and everything else, bad people coming and going. And when I moved in, there was a lot of unsavory characters. I had to tell the owner that they had to go. And there's a lot of people who are witnesses to this. And I know that some former residents tried to sneak into the place, which concerned for my public safety. And I know this was this owner, Mark Bellhoff, used a Don Hudson. And I know that from Mr. Alderman, I mean Alderman, Mr. Turner told me that this guy got evicted from a place for bringing unsavory characters into his place, which was not allowed by the city. And my concern is now this owner wants to bring more people in, stuff the place up so he can make more money. And I'm concerned for my safety and everything else. I shared a house with my roommate, Mr. Vince, and we shared a rent and everything else. And he's now trying to push another person in the place and everything and without my consent. And I mean, I don't know if there is, I would like to talk to you in private with this about because I'm concerned for my safety, because I do not want more unsavory characters. Because there was previously, when I talked with Mr. Turner, he tried to push someone in without me knowing it. And the guy got in my face, so-called friendly, but the guy creeped me out, and I tried to avoid him as much as possible, and he kept coming onto me, and we finally had to get him out with the owner. And he tried to, the owner tried to boot and tried to retaliate against me. And I talked to my attorney, Mr. Stanton, and he told me that there was this phony document that wasn't even certified to try to convict me in retaliation. And I'm concerned that he just wants to make this into a more of a moneymaker instead of concern for safety for tenants. And I tried to maintain the place and everything else. I mean, Mr. Turner has helped me a little bit in trying to maintain the place. And that's all I have to say about it. I would like to talk to you in private about this concern and some other concerns, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No problem.
Thank you. That concludes your public time, sir.
I'm gonna say this real quick as relates. The Illinois EPA will be presenting a draft permit to the public re-ethylene oxide on November the 14th, 6:30 to 9:30 PM at the Lake County Auditorium, 19351 West Washington Street, Grace, the Grace Lake Campus, at COC Grace Lake Campus. And we will add this to the public record, Janet. So thank you for letting us know.
It's on November 14th.
November 14th.
6:30.
6:30.
That's true.
Yeah. All right. Item four, consent agenda. There's a motion on the floor for consent agenda. Right now, it goes from items A through T. There's a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Turner. Are there any questions? Item E, right now, has been, it will be taken out. Any other items?
Yeah, item H, please.
Item H, any other items? Okay, right now, motion of consent agenda for items four through D, F, G, I through T. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please. Oh, I need to, I'll take Janet. I'll take up to A through L, and then you do the rest. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. Motion to approve regular city council meeting minutes from October 7, 2019. Motion to approve special city council meeting minutes from October 17, 2019. Motion to approve regular city council meeting minutes from October 21, 2019. Proclamation, November 1, 2019, as extra mile day. Item F, motion to authorize proper city official to complete the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Form 6.75, entitled Suggested Resolution to Include Cash Payup Related to Health Insurance as IMF Earnings. This matter was, I'm sorry. Item G, motion to approve dental insurance employee benefit in Delta Dental Illinois for 2020 plan for the year estimated an annual premium of $48,332.40. Motion to approve the life insurance employee benefits with Dearborn National for 2020 Plan year for the estimated annual premium of $59,879. Motion to approve the supplemental retirement insurance plan with United American Insurance Company Emeritus Vision in Group Part D Plan through Express Script Insurance Company for 2020 year plan. Motion to approve, I'm sorry, item K, motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with agreement made between Loco 73 Service Employee International Union, better known as SEIU, AFL/CIO, and the City of Waukegan to be effective May 1, 2019, and to be terminated April 30, 2022. Item L, resolution ratifying a contract, GHD Services, Inc., in an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Waukegan and Illinois Environmental Protection Agency regarding air testing and ethylene oxide emission. I'll keep going, Janet. Item H, and item M, motion to authorize proper city official to settle police department workers' compensation claim, 20190128001, for the total amount of $13,836.20. Item N, motion to approve, authorize, motion authorize the proper city official to settle, correction, should be item N, motion to approve zoning calendar, 2592, variance and 100 feet height allowance B3, general commercial district to allow 180-foot communication tower. Item O, motion to approve vendor payments dated November 4, 2019, a total amount of Item P, motion to approve regular payroll dated October 25, 2019, in a total amount of $1,588,597.27. Item Q, motion to approve holiday buyback payroll dated October 25, 2019, a total amount of $775.73. Item R, motion to approve comp times cash out payroll dated October 25, 2019, in a total amount of $898.57. Item S, motion to approve fire retro, fire retro payroll dated October 25, 2019, a total amount of $862.39. And the last item T, motion to approve all Raffo sales application. Bam! I did it. Very good job. All right. I was on a roll, Janet. There ain't need to stop me. All right, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye, all except for, I want to abstain from item J, item E.
Okay.
Item E was pulled.
It was pulled. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passing carry. Item six, we've already heard, oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to go too fast. Here we go. All right. All right, we have items four, E, and H, everyone. Motion, motion by Alderman, Mozzio, second by Alderman Turner, to approve orders authorizing Class J liquor license for Lotus Suites located at 4601 West York House Road. Question to the motion. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
I'll be first. Aye.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Alderman Mozzio, thank you. Alderman Kirkwood.
I abstain.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion's passing carry. Item E, I'm sorry, item H, 4H, motion by, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve health insurance employee benefit with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois 2020 Plan year for estimated annual premium of $6,492,910. Alderman Turner had a question? Is that a question, sir?
No, I just wanted to make sure it's, he had an opportunity to abstain from the vote. I have a conflict of interest involved in litigation against HBSC.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
I abstain.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
All right, motion's passing carry. Item seven, item seven, all of item seven A through E has been a motion by Alderman Newsom to hold this matter over. The matter's being held over.
Thank you.
All right. Ordinance, item eight, there being none. Item nine, closing items, Alderman's time.
Number five, reports and communications.
Oh, I apologize, everyone. Reports and communication, item five. Dr. Schwab does have a report for us. Dr. Schwab.
Yeah, as reported, we concluded the majority of the annual audit last year at Finance Committee and approved by the city council. One remaining portion was the publishing of the annual treasures report that was published in the Waukegan New Sun on the 31st as required and was filed with our city clerk, the county clerk, and the county treasurer. All is complete, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding the treasures report? Alderman. Okay. Now back down to item number nine, which is Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Mozzio.
Thank you. Mr. Dyne was correct. One thing I think most people that I talk to and can agree on is property tax relief. People are tired of paying property taxes. It's why the state did what they did. It's why the state did what they did with legalizing cannabis and expanding gambling, among other things, is to try to get more revenue. The other thing that's hanging over our head is pension costs. Again, same thing with the state. How do you get property tax relief? You have to develop, you have to get development, you have to get other streams of revenue. There's no other way. Now, we could not increase property taxes, but then we have to cut city services or lay people off or have furlough days or do something of that sort. We've been through that before. I think you could ask the staff, and the only two Aldermen I think that were up at a time were me and Alderman Newsom, we're still feeling the scars from that.
Yeah.
You can't, when you, we can't have a single question where, "Do you want this?" and someone says, "No." The question's, "Do you want this?" Because if we don't do this, then this is gonna happen. There's a lot of dots that need to be connected in government and in the system, and a lot of dominos are connected. It's not just a simple question, "Do you want this? Yes or no? Do you want cannabis? Yes or no? Do you want a casino? Yes or no?" It's not that simple. There's too many dots connected to it. But how do we get property tax relief? You need other streams of revenue, you need consistent taxes coming in, and the number one, in my mind, always number one thing is, we have got to sell city land. It costs us money. We have land that could be developed and we're in a quandary now on what we're gonna do with it. If you want property tax relief, you have to chip away at it. Every little thing helps, every business helps. Every time we sell city land helps. Every, everything we can tax that generates revenue helps. All of that helps to go to property tax relief. And yes, if we do get new revenue, then you need to hold us accountable up here and say, "What are you spending it on? What are you spending it on?" Pretty easy with the gaming machines. All of that money by ordinance goes to pensions. There's no mystery on that one. We made that clear. It all goes to pension costs. That's why if we do get new development and we do get the casino and it's developed, I want to dedicate, I don't know what the percentage is, but I have to sit down with people and dedicate more to pensions, some to infrastructure, especially on the sale of the land. Where else are you gonna, where, who else is gonna pay $10 million for a piece of city If anybody else came here, you'd know what they want? Hey, can we have it for a dollar? And, we want a rebate. Yeah, give me a 20, 20-year rebate.
Yep.
We got a chance to get a cash infusion. We may not really like it, but like I said, I've said up here almost every week, I know one thing we can agree on, we want property tax relief. You might not like the way we're trying to get it, but you want that, because that affects all of us. Everybody who owns a house or rents a house or has property is affected by property taxes. So we need to start thinking, we need to be open for business. Get as much as we can here. Get, get as much money from people that come to visit Waukegan as much as we can. Every dollar helps. In my mind, I can't say no to all that stuff and then say, "No to property tax relief. No, no, we're not gonna raise property taxes." Then I gotta say, I gotta say yes to cut something. Hey, Mr. Hewitt, can I get those, uh, branches picked up over in Hyde Park? Sorry, Greg, we don't have a crew for that anymore. Hey, my water main is broke, it's midnight on Christmas Eve. We ain't got no overtime, we're gonna have to wait a couple days for water. Hey, can we get the streets plowed? Nah, we're not paying any overtime, you're gonna have to wait. I had a heart attack when I was 45 and God bless the Waukegan Fire Department that came and they were close. Somebody else might not be so lucky if you have to have layoffs because you don't have enough money to pay or close a fire station. Every dollar helps. Thank you.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just a reminder to the 4th Ward residents that on Saturday, November the 9th, from 9:80 AM to 12:00 PM, we're gonna be having our family photo day. You can go on my Facebook page, Alderman Kirkwood, and sign up for that. If you're here in the audience, I have a flyer that I can hand out to you. Once again, I want to remind all of the 4th Ward residents that when raking leaves, make sure they're not in the street, that they're on the parkway area so that we do not clog up our gutters and systems. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Yes, I just wanted to announce the next leaf pickup for the 5th Ward is gonna be Wednesday, November 13th, and Thursday, November 14th. And this is kinda tentative. They try to keep as close to that date as they can, so make sure you get your leaves out, like Alderman Kirkwood said, not in the street, on the parkway. And that's all I have.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. I wanna pick up where Alderman Newsom left off and reiterate Alderman Kirkwood's comments about the leaf pickup. So, we'll also be doing leaf pickup in the 6th Ward again, matching the 5th Ward, that'll be Wednesday, November 13th, and Thursday, November 14th, Tuesday, November 26th, and Wednesday, November 27th. And again, don't put the leaves out into the street, leave them right at the edge of the curb on the parkway. In the 6th Ward, I am happy to report, we're finally beginning to make some progress on the demolition of 709, or 707, 709 North Avenue. Last week, they were cruising, doing pre-demol work, that is, they were removing, removing everything that was salvageable, salvageable, such as plumbing, sinks, toilets, those kinds of things, electricals. And I'm not sure what the scared is on the actual demolition, but it's coming and it's coming soon. So I'm really excited about that. Had a number of calls, um, over the past couple of weeks about the sidewalks and stumps and so forth. This is a continuing issue in the 6th Ward. I know we have been a little slow in getting these things done. I met with Director of Public Works and he assures me that while winter is rapidly approaching, he hasn't stopped work. The engineers and the Public Works crew are doing the best they can to try and catch up and get some of these sidewalks done before wintertime. I'll be sending over a list also of trees and stumps that need to be removed in the 6th Ward, and I think we'll make some progress there as well. Reminder that next Monday, November 11th, is Veterans Day, and thank all the veterans for their service to our country. And I'm proud to be a twice honorably discharged veteran of the United States Navy. I wanna make a comment about property taxes and, yeah, I am known as No Tax Turner because I don't vote on property, vote for property tax. I never support property tax increases. I've had that conversation with numerous people lately, starting Friday and over the weekend. I received 27 calls and today, see, received two more calls while I was working from my neighbors in the 6th Ward who asked me not to vote for property tax increase. And I'm a man of my word, I ran on that platform, and it's kinda coincidental, I was listening to my MP3s today in the car and I came across, I have a, an audio clip, it was a robo-call I did when I ran for office one time, many years ago. Said, "Hi, I'm Keith Turner. Keith, No Tax Turner, I ain't voting for no property tax." And I am true to my word, I will not be voting for a property tax whenever it comes back up for a vote. So I wanna thank you all for your attention to what goes on here. We're starting to have a great turnout, more of a turnout with residents paying attention and coming down to city council meeting. And just thank you for your attention and participation in this process. And thank you for letting me be your Alderman for my focus in the 6th Ward. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As the previous Alderman indicated, the leaf schedule is out. I think the most important thing to keep in mind is that the weather is not going to cooperate. So, the sooner you get out there and get them out on the parkway, the better it'll be. And that's pretty much, oh, and I wanna thank everyone that came up to talk during audience time. It is only three minutes, but it is your opportunity to at least give us your feedback. Thank you very much.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I wanna thank Public Works for the dumpster on the 28th. I think it was a big success. We were able to use St. Dismas parking lot, and I think it worked out great, and it didn't snow that day, so that was good. So, thank you to Mike and his crew for making that happen. I was able to attend the Black Lives Matter Gala last night. It was an event that focused on millennials and encouraging millennial involvement in our community. It was an excellent event. They had two young people that performed. One young lady did a praise dance that was just breathtaking, and a seventh grader young man sang a solo, "Rise Up," that I know brought some people to tears. So, it was, it was really amazing. So, I'm glad that I had a chance to participate in that. I also wanna encourage people to pay attention to the leaf pickup. The 8th Ward, we have coming up on Monday, the 11th, and Tuesday, the 12th, and then again on Monday, the 25th, and Tuesday, the 26th. So hopefully, the weather will cooperate enough that people can get them out again to the curb, not in the street. And I just want to voice my public support for HB 3888. So, I wish we could've done that as a whole council, but I personally support this bill and hope that it makes its way through the Senate and onto the governor's desk. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
I wanna remind people that this Wednesday and Thursday is the 9th Ward's first leaf pickup. 9th Ward is always full of leaves, and please, after this last storm, take advantage of this leaf pickup and get those out this week, because it's Wednesday and Thursday already this week. I wanna thank Public Works for snow plowing our streets and doing the best they could with our Halloween at the same night. So, I know we had our work cut out for us, and I'm glad that you were watching for our children, because it was an awful night. I do wanna also remind 9th Ward residents in particular, please, sign your witness slip. If this is important to you, which it should be, then you need to take the time to do this. I get a lot of people who complain about it, but they don't take the next step. This is your opportunity. If you miss this step, well then, you haven't supported the bill. So, again, don't talk about it, take action. I will skip my discussion tonight on taxes, because we're deferring the vote, but I will discuss that with any resident who wants to talk about it, and that's it.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I wanted to announce for the 1st Ward, this Wednesday is your first leaf pickup, November 6th, and the second one will be November 20th. And I just want to share my experience, I had a ride, my first ride along with our police officers, and I just wanna encourage my fellow Aldermen there, hungry to see us out there with them. I went with the ride along and it was a suicidal victim, and it was quite fulfilling to know and see that incident not happen. So, I just wanna encourage you all as Aldermen to do that. Also, I went to the Black Lives Matter and it was a joy to see a celebration and positive, empowering acknowledgement at that event. Also, I went to the, I think it's called Bonnie's Mack and Smack? Booty Max. Booty Max, yeah, shack. But it was a wonderful, new business that we're celebrating, is that 173 and Green Bay Road. Excellent barbecue and greens and all that good stuff.
Duncan Family.
Yes. And then lastly, I'd like to announce that Trinity AME Church at 210 South Avenue in the 1st Ward, they will be having their veterans' celebration. Service, November 10th at 11:00 AM. Thank you.
Before we leave, on the leaf pickup, everybody, understand, it will change if it snows, or, what about rain, Mike? Sometime if the rain is too heavy, it could change the day too.
It could freeze.
Yeah. On the, on the leaf pickup, if it rains, I know sometimes the vacuum just is not powerful enough to suck those leaves up. So just understand, due to weather condition, it could change. Only thing really gonna, is that snow. The other thing, demolitions, Alderman Turner and the rest of the Aldermen, over the next probably 15, 16 months, we're gonna be aggressively moving to demolish. As we speak today, we have roughly 15 homes ready to go. That's through our, our process of, you know, going after home, once you go through the judicial process and we're ready. One of the costs, though, Alderman, is driving it up, is the asbestos that some of the older homes we have, that could escalate these costs, another $6,000 or $7,000. We're looking at about, on average, about $14,000 to $15,000 per home, but if there's an asbestos on those homes, that's driving it up to another $6,000, sometimes up to $10,000, depends how big the structure is. To offset some of those costs, we've spoken with our police department and fire department, where it might be able to do controlled burns in them, or they can just take it to a level where they do a lot of, what is it, what is it, chiefs, practice in these homes from fire, training, that's the best word, training, policing, fire, so we can reduce some of those costs. But, we're gonna be aggressively going after those, so you, you might be seeing multiple, a lot of this on the agenda with different vendors, with doing two or three times, two or three at a time. So that's, that's gonna be something. But tonight, it was something else mentioned, and it's about the appraisal, it was not the appraisal, but the evaluations of the homes. You said you got there right? And ladies and gentlemen, I wanna be very clear, listen to me, listen to me well. Jim, I know you're in the audience. The City of Waukegan, Alderman, I hope all of you agree with me, the City of Waukegan does not handle those EAVs, assess evaluation. The City of Waukegan does not handle that. That does not come from the City of Waukegan. Do we all agree, Alderman? So, that is not, when you get those, there's a blue form on there, you all get the blue form, right? That blue form tells you what your assess evaluation is for 20, the 2020, 2019. It does not come from the City of Waukegan, Illinois. We don't regulate it, we don't administrate it, nor do we have a voice except the voice of to tell you that you can challenge those evaluations. From those evaluations, that with our, the rate that we have, that will determine your property tax. I personally received a 38% increase on my home. I'm calling him up and I'm gonna challenge that. Typically, you probably would get between, I'm gonna say from zero to about five or six, it might be about the normal, on an average here, 38%. Ladies and gentlemen, for those Waukegan Township proper, your Waukegan Township Assessor, that's who you need to call. Calling your Alderman, calling me. We have no regulation, zero. If you're in Warren Township, Libertyville Township, call those Township Assessors. From that point, you can then contest at the county building, if I'm not mistaken. Is that, Jim, you know about, right? You can contest at, at the county. But you can call us, we're gonna direct you over there. Now, there is a time period, ladies and gentlemen, there's a time period on there. And if I wanna, I wanna say the 12th, the 10th. So after 11, November 10th, 2019, that's it for the year. So when you come out in June and September, it's a, it's a done deal. But again, the mayor, the city, the Alderman have no control of the assess evaluation, zero. I am going to be reaching out to- I am going to be reaching out to the Waukegan Township assessor, Mr. Merk Strickland, to come in and explain exactly that process. He is the Waukegan Township assessor. Assessor. He is the assessor for Waukegan Township proper. For Libertyville, we have Waukegan people live in Libertyville Township. We have those who live in Warren Township. You have to go to the Warren Township assessors and the Libertyville Township assessor for if you live in those properties. And I think even got some, is it Zion, a little bit of Zion? Or Benton, Benton Township. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, while we hear you, please do not come here on, on 11:10 and then come to the mic and say, "We increase your assess evaluation." The City of Waukegan does not have that authority. Pass this on. You're the leaders. People listen to you. Alderman, you get calls. Please let them know this must happen before 11:10 or it's over until, again, in the 2020 year. So that's what I really wanted to put out there. And I'm pretty sure we're going to have some spirited discussions on our, on our levy. And I look forward to those. Alderman, I look forward to giving, you giving me a call and, and go with it. I've been up here 20 years. It is what it is. We need to manage what it is. And we'll go from there. Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Taylor, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. I want to be on, I want to be on record. Thank you.